Is you know, what do you think has qualified you to continue on in the role that you've held?
So I believe, you know, just my life experiences, my dedications with my community, my advocacy. I'm very transparent and honest with my community. So I believe the work that we've done, it qualifies me for moving forward for an additional four years.
Right. And what are some initiatives that you have prioritized during your time in your seats? And what are some initiatives you have moving forward that are priority to you?
A great answer. So what I prioritize myself in doing is that uniting my entire district from missionary reach East Chattanooga and everybody in between. So make sure that they understand that their voice matters, right? And if we all advocate for every community, right, then we can begin to make strides within, you know, tackling the issues that affect our district. And I made it a priority to, you know, work with the chamber to recruit businesses. And for them to really understand like the layout of Chattanooga, the issues and the obstacles that we have here in Chattanooga with people obtaining jobs. So people that have been incarcerated, those background issues and how they could still be put in the pipelines to obtain employment. So employers will have to reach out to outsiders outside of our city. And we've also for District Nine, we've pushed initiative and passed and supported for affordable housing. Not just getting a million additional dollars to support it. And sustain it for organizations that build housing that's affordable or contract out to developers as incentives. But we've made sure to, you know, keep our sound housing affordable that we have. Like when we're thinking about the Bay Area apartments, when we're talking about battery heights and those apartment complexes there. We wanted to make sure that we have in place for the next thirty years that people can have somewhere to live that's affordable for them. And then also working with C and E to create affordable housing as well. And when we look and think about what affordable housing mean and who can truly afford it. When you're thinking about our professionals that are the CNA, that are pharmacy techs, our firefighters, our police departments, people that work news media, right? Like we can afford those housing opportunities for those individuals. And we also have worked with District Nine with our infrastructure. So public safety is more than just about the police. It's the way that our sidewalks are built for people that can walk, right? And it's our streets when people are riding up and down our streets. And it's our lighting in our communities, right? Because these things are public safety, because we can then talk about reducing crime. And for District Nine, we've had the opportunity to reduce crime by addressing all of those key issues along with blight in our community. So moving forward, I mean, that's just a few things that we've championed the cause for. And so moving forward, we most definitely want to continue to fight to reduce absolute poverty. And we also want to make sure that we're championing to get people to understand the benefits of creating wealth through home ownership, what that looks like. And then also partnering more with our school system to utilize our space infrastructure that we already have with our YFD sites, right? And making sure that it's a community hub, not just for our kids to come, you know, have a safe place to congregate, but for the entire family unit, right? Whatever that issue is that need to come, we need to have that hub at our YFD sites for it to be available for everybody in the family. And then also, we just want to continue the great things that we're doing in District Nine, right? Positioning people for mobile mobility because that's very important. District Nine, like we're on the cusp of a lot of different things that's happening as far as economic growth, jobs that are coming to our, our area, our community and surrounding area. And we want to make sure people are positioned because we want a community that's very diverse. We have, and in fact, we have all levels of income. We have all kind of people that's living in our communities, right? And what that looks like is we want to spur development and have our thriving business quarters, right? In each community and then also have creative spaces for people to take their families, walk their dog. It just needs to be a community that everybody will be proud to live in. Like we talk about our downtown often because it's a great place for everybody to go and people can access things as they work, live and play. But I want that same objective for District Nine, but with a layout of how District Nine wants our district to look.
Right. Um, okay, so I, I hear a lot of, okay, infrastructure. I hear a lot of, uh, obviously kind of working with like not prison reform necessarily, but just kind of helping people. Guessing people of color kind of reacclimate and that there are jobs available for them, affordable housing. Those are kind of the bigger things that I'm hearing from what you're saying.
Right. And it's more than just people of color. It's because I represent everybody, black, white, Latino, know that our community, we're a melting pot of every, of everyone and everything. So for me, every fight, every campaign is geared towards everybody, right? And, um, and I most definitely make sure that we, uh, with my community, communicating that like it's about all of us. We're not leaving anybody behind. And if someone is struggling in our community, it affects our whole entire district until we address that. And it's another important thing that I forgot that I did not mention was that we tackled the food desert in East Chattanooga to make sure that they have access to food. And so now where previously we had to take long distance trips in that area. Now they can come there and it's in a community where people can walk, they can bike, they can bus to this area for groceries.
Right. Well, as we near, um, just, I guess we're kind of past a year almost. I think it'll be a year since COVID hit and, and you know, a lot of people's lives changed. Businesses and individuals are struggling and have struggled. A lot of businesses didn't make it out of last year just because of the economic impact. So I'm sure that's something that is also a priority to you. How do you plan to provide aid to businesses and families that have been hit hard by the pandemic?
Most definitely. And this is an ongoing fight. So it most definitely is a, the number one priority and it's, you know, we don't have to mention it because we know that there's an expectation, right? That has to be done COVID recovery. And so what my intentions or what I plan to do is what we're already doing, right? Making sure that we have funding for our small businesses so they can continue to thrive. Making sure they understand the payroll payment, you know, incentive that the state has offered us. And then also making sure that we using our federal funds for HUD to make sure people are continuously housed. And they have their utilities paid for. And you know, anything else, we, we also supply congregate housing for people who, you know, are homeless or traditional. They don't have an actual place to live, so we can house them in a hotel, right? So we're not leaving anybody behind doing this, doing the effects of COVID nor the twenty twenty tornado. Because a lot of people lost a lot of things then as well and businesses were disrupted too. And so we want to make sure we're continuing that. And also working with our, our state representatives and state senators and our congressmen to make sure they understand the plight of what's going on in Chattanooga. And the recovery measures that we need to continue for our businesses to continue to thrive, to operate. And then it's as well as in District Nine and the whole entire city, like we have to support our small businesses. Whether if you go and wear a mask and sit in an E or if you just order takeout. But we most definitely have to support and share the great stories of being, you know, different restaurants that you've tried or different businesses. Support our entrepreneurs and this way we can continue to grow and thrive and move our economy forward.
Right. Um, are there any other programs that you would like to add? I know that, you know, the city of Chattanooga has that rent and utilities assistance. I think that has benefited a lot of people who live within the city limits. But then those people who are kind of on the outskirts and don't meet the requirement just because of where they live kind of get left out of that.
Right. So with economic development, with their funding, their federal funds, like it is only pertaining if you've been affected by COVID. So they can kind of go back for three months and, you know, help you with that process there. Now with the Office of Family Empowerment, so we can help you for additional months. And it doesn't have to be COVID related or it can be COVID related. And so we can get them in a pipeline and the thing there is that you can help also with the funding with the, oh, Office of Family Empowerment. Is that you can live inside of days or you can live in Red Bank and you can still receive help. And then also they have like with Hamilton County, they offer with their Hamilton County Human Services Department, they help those areas as well. So, um, and then you have three one one, you have Met Me, you have different partners that are doing a variety of different things. So collectively, all of us together, we're addressing the issue with COVID, the people that have been affected by it.
Right. Um, are there any other programs that you might, you know, feel like you need, you know, the city of Chattanooga needs to also continue to implement? Or like new programs that you feel like you want to see implemented in the future?
I think, you know, what we already currently have, I think that is great. Um, I think that it, we should have more out, community outreach. So whatever programming that we do have, so because we've heard consistently that people just don't know what we have to offer. People don't, you know, people aren't tech savvy or, you know, different things, they may not be on social media. So if we had individuals navigators that were able to work in, um, you know, communities that may not typically get the information. They may have, um, in a, no internet access or anything like that to access the information. So we had people knocking on doors, like a continuous campaign about the services that we have to offer, setting up the hubs, partnering with our churches. And offering those same services available at our churches and our YFD sites. And sometimes we may have to traditionally go outside of what the scope is or what we're used to seeing. We could set up a booth at a supermarket, right? Because we could, we could capture people at a grocery store because we know they're gonna go shop for groceries. Well, at this grocery store location, you can have somebody stop, hey, I need help with my light bill. They can fill out the paperwork or whatever it is is needed or give them the information, schedule an appointment and there it is, right? So we have to always think about ways, we're in twenty twenty one and doing it the old way is, is just not working, right? In this century, so we have to think about things outside of the norm for everybody to, you know, receive the help.
Yeah, okay. Well, moving on to paving and transportation. Those are consistently, um, things that are concerns for, um, citizens according to a study by the city. What transportation and infrastructure goals do you have if elected? I know you kind of spoke a little bit about this earlier, but just more in depth.
You know what, Joy, I honestly think our transportation system is outdated. Cause when you go and visit other thriving cities, they have all kind of transportation options. But what I would love to see Carter do is create like a centralized location for transportation. So it is reduces people from just hanging out on the street, waiting on a transfer. It alleviates that burden at this centralized location. You can have subway, you can have, you know, different things, options of transporting around the city of Chattanooga. And that makes it more safer for us and you, and it connects you to, to different things. If you want to go to parks or, you know, just want to walk or, you know, anything like that. And then everybody can transfer with safety in mind, but not just outside of that, right? We need to create opportunities where we have our transportation, public transportation. We need to have some corridors set up that is fair and, and it's, uh, it's free. And so, because everybody may not want to ride the bus all the way from Hamilton Place to straight downtown. And they just may want to catch the bus to go three blocks in between. Well, hey, if that little three block radius is free, then it also frees up a lot of traffic that's on the roads and different things like that. But yes, we do need additional dollars when we talk about our pavement with our streets. Because our roads have just been unkept for, you know, decades. And then, but it's more than just about paving the road, right? Because up under those streets, we have pipes with our water that's got, you know, the water infrastructure and everything like that. So if we sometimes see a road that's got, it's kind of dented in and failing and things, things like that, the trenches are failing. And that means the water supply, we gotta take a deeper look, the water, the sewer that's under that road. Cause we can pave it, but if the pipes underneath is something going on with our sewer and water lines, then that's a whole different story. It has to be fixed. And that's a lot of things that's happening with our road, uh, as well. And then when we talk about it, um, so we gotta consider the litter that's being thrown out on our, on our roads, right? It can cause traffic related incidents and different things like that. So it's a lot that I take, uh, you know, I, I view it for a holistic lens. Is that we just take a, a bigger look at what's really happening when we're talking about our road infrastructure. Because it's a lot that's going on and also with our pedestrians as well.
Right. Um, yeah, you mentioned funding. I mean, obviously any kind of infrastructure project is going to cost a lot of money. Do you have any other ideas or have you started like researching any grants that are available? Or, and you also mentioned, um, you know, kind of looking at different cities and seeing their transportation, um, kind of centralized. Is there any city that pops out to you as an example of something, somewhere that you feel like Chattanooga should, Chattanooga should like kind of try to take, um, a look at what they're doing?
Yes, DC. I love DC because I've got every option of transportation to get where I need to go, right? And I think that we're in that time and we have like, you know, infrastructure already laid out with our rail, you know, facilities. For, you know, different things like that to where we can, our trolleys and we could bring that stuff back to life. And you know, back, back in the sixties, you know, fifties and sixties and earlier on, like we had those transportation options, right? So we should be able to have those, establish those routes. And if so, with additional options, Joy, that means that people that get employed at our Volkswagen, at Amazon, you know, places that are far out. Maybe commute out to Barker, uh, different places. Maybe if we get, you know, rail, speed rail, they can commute to Atlanta, Nashville, wherever. But we gotta be trending on what's happening. But I say DC because it's one place that's already actually doing it. That, you know, people can get around and I think it's a great model to, uh, you know, to follow Chattanooga. And so the grant, so I do well that is that I work with people who, that's what they do all day. They research grants, they write grants, they know what to say and what to use and they have the data to collect. So working with our chamber and, you know, I work with them to say, hey, do we have any grants about, you know, X, Y, and Z? And they're great at responding. Charles Wood, he's awesome and amazing to say, this is what we have been working on. Would you, you'd like to have some input? Is there anything additional that you're actually looking for to target down the specific grant, you know, that we need? And then also just working with depending on type of grant that it is. So if it's federal grants and different things, if it's state level grants and partnering with those legislators like Chuck Flashman that works on the federal level. We got Yusuf Hakeem and London Lamar and Tony over, you know, everybody that's working on the state level. To where we can say, hey, this is the need for Chattanooga, here's a grant opportunity. Will this work for Chattanooga? Can somebody apply for it? And then we go from there and the same thing on our municipal level is that we have several grant writers and that's their job all day to diligently search. And then they'll apply those things to the things that's happening within the city of Chattanooga.
Right. Okay. Let's kind of shift gears. Um, minimum wage, that is something that a lot of activists locally and labor unions are supporting. Right now, it's a big conversation with, um, you know, President Biden trying to get that number to fifteen dollars an hour. What do you think about that? This is something that Mayor Burke has tried to do, he did, or he tried to do this before COVID. Is this something that you support? And if so, why or why not?
Absolutely. I support it. I think that it's time, we're past time, Joy. Then we need to increase the wages to fifteen dollars. And yes, we did try and we were right there at it. And then what happened was the pandemic happened strongly. So we had to revisit like what we could do because we most definitely, you know, wanted to make sure that our budget was a balanced budget and it was taking care of everything else. So it's not something that has been shelved and, and just gonna be forgotten about. It's a continued issue that we're gonna continue to push until it's done. Uh, because we know right now we have people that work for the city that's not making fifteen dollars. They're barely making, uh, a little over minimum wage, but they're having to work two, three different jobs, even with our first responders. So we need to make sure that we're positioning them to where they no longer have to work two, three jobs, right? They can be at home, they can take care of their families and they don't have to, you know, be exhausted at the end of the day. And, um, so we understand firsthand what that feels like. And especially me, you know, being a single mom, having to raise kids now, raising my granddaughter. So we most definitely want to make sure that individuals don't have to encounter all of those obstacles and they're in a position to take care of their families. And so also not just with Mayor Burke, the work that he's doing, like we're working, I'm a part of the National League of Cities. And we also address these key issues with different policies to look at what we can change. It's been an issue that our state, like if our state or to the C just say, hey, we're gonna mandate that this happen, this will be awesome, right? And so we want to make sure that people understand that, like it's not just stopping at our city council. You can go the step above to make sure that you're advocating for the changes as well for the state to make it a policy change or law change for all across Tennessee.
Right. Um, kind of on that same note, you have forty percent of Chattanooga households saying that they feel that housing is a burden to them. They're paying more than thirty percent of their income just to make sure they have somewhere to stay. And, you know, they struggle with the other day to day necessities. I know you kind of briefly spoke about this, um, a little bit earlier, saying that, you know, affordable housing is a priority to you moving forward. How would you address that in your district?
So with affordable housing and how I have addressed it is that I really, um, make sure that people understand what that word means, right? So affordability, affordable housing is just particularly what that person can afford. And a lot of times I will say, even if we can afford it, just to have somewhere to stay and to feel like they're in a safe neighborhood. What I'm gonna move to this community and I'm gonna just struggle to find a way to pay thirteen fifty, right? Whereas in another community, the rent may be nine hundred dollars, but because you don't feel safe in that neighborhood. And that could be very affordable to you, but you choose not to live in that area, right? Does that make sense? And as we get affordability confused with low income to moderate housing. So for the community members that I hear, it's that we need more low to moderate income housing. But for me, communities can't thrive if everybody's, is on a lower end of the spectrum. If everybody in that community and the things that we desire to have, we have to have a community that's mixed income, right? So you may be able to live in a situation that your landlord is saying, well, we're gonna keep your rent at five hundred dollars. But when you think about what you're living in for five hundred dollars, is the house safe? Is it immobile? Do you have a slumlord? You know, we have to be careful of those things. So we're living in twenty twenty one and I can't think of an area that's gonna, if you're saying that this is a safe area, your landlord is keeping up the property. And everything is happening, then you got all the trendy neat things around you. I, I can't see a location at five hundred dollars.
Right.
What it, right, that you would deem safe, although we wish to have that. But if the, the prices of everything has, has went up over the course of years, nothing is still the same. So when my parents, they had their home, it was a reasonable price. And looking at their deed, like I can imagine like the struggles that they went through because on their deed still today, it says that this area is only for white people only. You know what I mean? But they made this decision to go ahead and push through those barriers and, and become a homeowner, which was affordable. And then paying the actual rent every month. So becoming a homeowner to our community, it, we, we have to have that mindset shift, Joy. To understand if I become a homeowner, then I can clearly afford a reduced amount of what I can pay and what's affordable. It's just going out, going through the process, getting your credit and everything together and understanding that, uh, you know, that we can do it. Um, so for me, that's the way that I handle it and address it is that I want to make sure that people really understand it. Because they get it confused. And then for District Nine, we want all kind of housing and we want each community to thrive and be, uh, you know, mixed income levels for everybody.
Right. So it sounds like, like a push for people to understand the value of homeownership is kind of on the agenda for you?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, well, speaking of, you know, last fall, shootings in Chattanooga were up twenty percent from the same time in twenty nineteen. And higher than any time in the last five years. That's kind of disturbing to know, uh, especially, I mean, it makes sense almost a little bit just considering the, the difference in, in where we are. With the economy, uh, with the stresses of COVID. But how would you work as a city council member to lower crime in your district?
And Joy, we can't, it's an initiative that has to take all of us. It's not just an initiative for council members. Like the community have to have a buy-in into reducing crime that's happening as well. But we can't really address crime without talking about the historical disadvantages that a lot of the communities have, right? And we often say, well, we, because the news media and social media and everybody, they hype it up. Oh, well, there was a shooting in East Chattanooga. Oh, there was a shooting in Eastdale. Oh, and the areas that are predominantly black. But we don't talk about the escalated crime that's happening in our area in the three, seven, four, two, one area codes. And we don't talk about that, right? It's silenced more so and it's swept up under the rug. But once we really talk about it and be honest about what the data is presenting and change the narrative of the conversation that's happening in poor black, uh, communities, right? And poor whites. And that, uh, when we change that narrative, people have a different view of what's actually happened when it comes to crime. So, um, we most definitely won't shoot his two Cs. And so we have to give people the opportunity, but they have to have the thrive to want to change their lifestyles and want to do better, right? And that's a decision that the individual have to make. So I can go to the person and say, hey, we've got all these services to offer you to help you improve your life. But if that individual decides to walk away and say, I'm, I don't want to be involved in any of those things. We've presented the opportunity and they have that right to make that decision. So it shouldn't fall on the wheelhouse of the council to say, we've gotta do something about crime. Because it's something that the entire community have to be involved in. And then we have to get back to taking control of our communities and not be afraid to report things. Like we've got so caught up in saying people are snitches, but we have to get in back into the reality of informing people about if they're doing something wrong. Even if you see the young man outside of your door, it's, we can say, hey, young man, you know, that's not right. Or why would you do that? I'm gonna give your parent a phone call. We should be able to have those conversations within our community and hopefully it doesn't lead to, you know, a tragedy event. And then we also have to be brave warriors. When we see acts that are happening that's criminal, we can intervene, right? I've had to intervene and, and you know, people, others have intervened. But if we let our people know that you love your value, you're more than just what you're wanting to throw your life away for. And I think, you know, they'll begin to understand it in transition. And then we have to be a supportive hub around our parents, right? Because we discussed, like parents are working two, three different jobs. A lot of our homes are, uh, single parent led and, you know, it's a hardship. And people begin to migrate to groups that's gonna make them feel like they're important, make them feel like they're loved. And, you know, then they gear to the criminal behavior. So we have to make sure that we're supporting, um, everybody and that's how we reduce it.
Right. I think that's a good way to kind of, um, get to kids who are, you know, still, I guess, being groomed or starting to be looked at by certain groups, um, that you just mentioned. Uh, but how do you get others to buy into this idea? Because I think that's really what it's gonna require. Of course, it's not gonna be all on the city council, but if you can't get people to buy into this idea that there's something better or there's another opportunity that could, you know, not be criminal activity, but that could still get me what I'm looking for, which is some sort of fulfillment. How do you get people to buy into that? Cause I think that's what you're, what you're saying when you say that it's gonna take a community effort. But there has to be some incentive to the community to want to change that mindset about crime and about reporting shootings and things like that.
Right. And it has to be some kind of self accountability as well. So right behind me, you see those keys that are up. So everybody in our communities, they're our keys to success, right? And so you have to take the initiative to say, I no longer want to live this way. And it's okay, right? I've had those challenges, everybody have those, those challenges and obstacles and barriers. And so what we also have to do is take pride back in our communities. And once we do that and understand like, hey, we're, we're not going to tolerate crime that's happening on our block. Like we've got kids here, like if you have community cleanups, like people have really given up hope in our communities. Because you always hear these labels that are put on communities that's saying that, you know, these are, uh, poor, this is the poor area. They don't care that they're zoned for failing schools, uh, you know, it's heavily drug activity. You hear those things and then when you ride through the community and you see, you've got all these abandoned properties. You've got litter thrown all over the place. You've got people that just, you know, that you would think that don't care, but they mimic the behavior that they see, right? So if they see somebody in the neighborhood that's taking pride and caring about it, loving them, inviting them to participate, then it gives them a mind shift. And they're thinking like, oh man, somebody really care about the area that they live. If you cut your grass, cut your neighbor's grass and get everybody into a system that on every Saturday at noon, we're gonna cut our grass. It can start as simply as that. But what people will see is that this community here, we, we no longer want the illegal activity. We don't want crime happening. We don't want these abandoned properties. Let's get together, practice group economists, let's buy this house for twenty thousand dollars and fix it up and get our family and friends to move into the community. So that's how we begin to start doing it and a community that has done that well, Joy, is Highland Park.
Which community?
Highland Park.
Where is that located?
Highland Park is right off of McCauley, lately, and McCauley in that area. And so, you know, they have, you know, they fixed up the community people. So it was a community that people just had done lost all hope in, right? And all it took was one individual to purchase abandoned, oblided property, fix it up and others start joining in the efforts to do that. Now Highland Park is a community that everybody want to, want to live in, right? But what has happened is that it's not affordable for everybody to live in. That, that's what happened. But just think about if you use that same concept and it was black and brown and poor white people that done the same thing. And it was black and brown and poor white people that done the same thing in our neighborhood and they're actually still residing in those communities.
Right. Cause I think that's the next, um, the next issue that kind of gets into like gentrification and how to avoid. Um, that from being the case, because you know, you do start building your neighborhood up and then suddenly there's an interest. But it's an interest that is pushing those folks who are on a limited income out of that community.
Right. And so with that, like gentrification, like it's it's becoming just like neighborhood revitalization and all these coined words that we come up with. You know, it sounds good at first, like, oh, we're gonna, nah, nah, nah. And then when you think about it, it begins to slowly take a negative shift. Right? About what the word truly means. And how we come at that is that if I own my house, I don't have to sell. I don't have to, you know what I mean? I just keep my improvements up and make sure my property value is is up. And so what happens when they come purchase their house next door? And then you, they raise, you know, fix the house up, they put it on the market for two hundred and seventy-five thousand, it's gonna increase your property back.
Right.
But if every house around the community is dilapidated and they set house up, it's not gonna be valued as much. Because my house and the neighbors across the street house, like we're still, our house look almost condemned. So it's not gonna. But if we again go back to homeownership. And then also when we think about our inheritances or, you know, when people, when parents are passed and they leave, they leave the kids the homes, don't sell them. Fix them, live them, come back, you know what I mean? This is something that you created a pipeline. And too, so when people come into your community saying, hey, I wanna buy your house for X amount of dollars. No, it's not for sale. And we have to make sure that that's known. And then that's how we maintain the people that are in our communities. And that's how we have control who comes into it. Because if I own my, my home and I wanna rent it out, then I control who lives in that community, right?
Right.
So that's how we, um, have to have. We have a lot of black communities that are thriving. And that's, you know, they're keeping it up. People are working class people that live in a community. Their yards are maintained, their streets look nice, or snow litter. You have several people who, they call them the mayors of the community. Because they're cleaning it up dirt, you know, and making sure that people know, like, you can't have this abandoned house in our community. They identify as slumlords. They're working with kids in the community. And so we just have to mimic that all over and really just get rid of these labels that they put on our community. So therefore, people wouldn't come into our community and say, I wanna buy your house for twenty thousand dollars.
Right. Well, moving along, um, activists spent the summer protesting police brutality. Across the country and in Chattanooga, uh, and a part of that was a call for the divestment in the police department. Um, is that something that you feel would be good for the community? And, um, what are some other, if not, what are some other ways that you feel there's a need or a space for re? Like enforcement, um, reform, law enforcement reform?
So with, I think it was great that the protesters came out. And I think that a lot of people didn't even realize that we were already doing those things at the scene, right? And a lot of times, like I say, people will automatically view public safety as a police issue. But there's all kind of things that are in that budget that's under, uh, public safety in the police budget, right? When we're talking about our firefighters, the first responders for them, when we're talking about lights for our street paving sidewalks. Those social services, victim services, all of those things are up under the police budget. So we're already doing those things. So even if we remove those services. And say, we're gonna put it over Office of Family Empowerment. It's still something that we were already doing. It's a public safety issue. When we're talking about our mental health and different things like that, it's pub, it comes back to public safety. But when our community members, uh, we react, we're reactionary. And when we're in that moment, we're not taking time to really hear or to understand the budget. Because right now, we're talking about, we want something that's a microwave fix. And it sounds good to be on the bullhorn and saying all these things when in reality, the city of Chattanooga are already doing these things, right? Now, do we need to partner more with, uh, more organizations? Yes, I would love to, to really identify the key services that we have. What I would love to see with our police not being the first call. And a lot of times they're not the first on the scene. It's our firefighters. But we don't know that because we're always talking about the police, you know what I mean? Our firefights, firefighters will get on the scene and determine like, hey, who need to be called X. And then, um, and sometimes when the police get there and arrive, they could be in a heated moment altercation. So and if we realize that this person has mental issues going on, then yes, I think it needs to be a different approach. Our police shouldn't service those calls. We should have a routing system that can route, hey, if there's something mental going on. If it's somebody that's homeless, if it's somebody, you know, different things like that. And if it's an emergency, emergency. Then yeah, deploy the police to go out and take care of it. Cause that's their role. They're sup- they're supposed to protect and serve our communities. Now, once they get to the point where they're violating policies and, you know, escalating tactics and straight pulling out guns. And you beaten and all that kind of thing, that's a whole nother different story, right? But as far as, um, divesting funds from the police department, there's no reason to divest it. Because those services, those core things that the protesters are asking for, we are already doing it and it needs to stay in the budget. Now, it can be moved under another entity, but that funding for those things, it needs to stay.
Right. So I think when they say divest in the police department, so you, I I think there was a time last year that the city council. Um, you all moved something that was under the police, um, budget into another section, right? I think it had something to do with, with, uh, was it canine service? There was some, it was something with animals or something like that. I can't exactly remember off the top of my head, so I apologize. Um, but I think they're more so speaking on the actual, like, physical departments. And how in its operating costs, whatever that may be. Not necessarily. So you might have like, like you said, some other things that are under here, paving, whatever, anything public safety related in that budget. And of course, you can move that over to somewhere else, but then what's left in the police budget? And that's where the activists are saying, we would like to see. Uh, some divestment. We don't wanna see our money continue to go into departments when they come into communities. That they, you know, can't necessarily relate to and police in a way that's very aggressive versus how they might police elsewhere. So with that being said, what is your approach? Cause it sounds like you're saying you don't really think that there's a need to necessarily. Uh, it sounds like you don't wanna see the Chattanooga Police Department.
When you look at the, no, I I don't, I think we need our police department. And and I'm the first one that's gonna call. If somebody break in my house, I need the police to come. So, yeah, we still need our police department. And so, um, and I'm supportive of that. And so I think when we talk about the departments that we have, like our victim services, that's a department, right? So, uh, we need that, cause we're talking about people that get shot. People that, you know, families that didn't have insurance, different things like that, we, they need that supportive on. Now, when we talking about our pay for our police officers, that's, we can't remove that. They have to get paid. We're bound by certain things that the police department have to have. Uh, nine one one communication system, like we have to have those things, right? And so we're talking about internal affairs, investigative measures and different things like that, our crime unit. Yes, we have to have those things. Now, when we get off into them purchasing military gear and different things like that. And that's a whole different time, Joy. Like, we have to really, do we need this? Like, why is it gonna affect the way that you're out in the community? You know, is it something that you must have? Like, those are the things that we have to really talk about as far as with our funding. But the thing, the core things that they have to have, we have to fund those things. And then that include bullets for their guns, right? Because you're a gun, if you get into a shootout. Now, we don't look at it that way.
Right.
And, um, because we feel like, oh, well, they shouldn't have these things. They're supposed to be able to protect themselves as well as protect. The communities that they're serving. And so our communities that look like me, black, poor, uh, you know, brown communities, black. And poor white areas, they can't identify with it because we put these labels and make policing look bad. So we don't have black people that are showing any interest and becoming a police officer. But how do you change it, Joy? Are you changing by becoming a police officer? We need more black men and women becoming officers and serve in our community. And then a lot of times, from a lot of the black officers that I've talked to, they may not wanna particularly serve in a predominantly black community. Because of the way that they're treated by black people. So we've gotta get out of that mindset and we got to be more supportive of our police officers.
Okay. Um, two with that, um, just to continue on that theme. So, you know, there's also, um, I just, I guess, a concern. Aside from that, about, um, the actual training, you know? Of course, you can get more people to say, hey, I'd like to be a police officer. The pay is what it is, but the training, I feel like is something that's been criticized highly, the amount of training. There not being enough, people not being prepared in a situation enough to not, you know, panic and. Pull the trigger and then suddenly someone is dead. Um, so with that, is there anything you feel needs to be reformed as far as training? As far as like the qualifications to become a member of law enforcement? Because I think that that's another argument that people who are, you know, I guess fed up, for lack of a better words. Of seeing black and brown people be brutalized. Um, that's one of the things they say. They feel like the officers don't have enough training. In the George Floyd incident, obviously. Three of those officers were fresh out. And then you had the one officer who was, um, seasoned. Uh, but unfortunately, because of their lack of experience and not, and lack of understanding of what to do in that situation. They watched a man die. So what do you say as far as, um, training? And and what other reforms are there aside from, of course, yes, having black and brown people be a part of the department? So that we can stop seeing them as something that's unfamiliar to us. Um, what other things can the police department be doing to try to minimize situations like what we saw with George Floyd?
Yeah. So I think it's more than just on the responsibility of the police department and our training. Like we, the training goes ongoing. So it's not that you graduate from the academy and then there's no training. And what we saw, Joy, and I wanna be clear when I say this, what we saw was that a man, that was some personal. Personal feelings what a man had against this black man. We can't change the way somebody's heart feels about somebody who is a different color, right? We we can't, we can't change that. We can't even legislate that. We we can't legislate that. So if people decide, and and, you know, to even attack you and I, like, they have to identify if they're racist or whatever. They have to do it. I wish there was a system or a true polygraph test that will build things about people, right? Because we don't need those kind of people that to be on our police department.
Right.
We have people who know how to do, you know, testing and can work around those things. And their sole mission to be would be, I now have the opportunity to do it for black and brown people. Which is not acceptable. But we also gotta have people in place who understand that this is wrong. See, right now in Chattanooga, we don't have those people in place. We, our district attorneys and our attorneys and all these judges, we don't have those people in place who gonna make the right decision. They're gonna go along to get along. And that's, that's just not right, right? And so we have to understand that as people that we gotta continue to fight the system. And we've been fighting this system for I don't know how many centuries, Joy. And it's not gonna, and I wish I could say, we can wave a one and it'll be a one stop fix, but it's not. And so you get rid of these racist policies, the policies that's even got the loopholes in them. This systemic racism, even with the words that we use that condone the behavior of what they're doing to us. And so we change that constitution that identifies that black people are whole now. This behavior won't continue to happen if we hold them accountable, the judges, the attorneys, the district attorneys. All of that, we, they have to hold them accountable. And right now, what they're doing is saying, kudos for doing it again. And we no longer can do that. But what our chief of police has done is that he made it to where that, hey, if these actions happen. You're eternated from our police department. You're gonna, you know, and we're going to still further to make sure that you're decredited. So you won't be able to go work in no other police department of, around the world, period, right? And that's what needs to happen. We need more people standing up. But the thing that we found the loophole, Joy, is that we can say, if they get cited. The court and say that they were wrong or anything like that, the district attorney, what he does is this. Is that he moves it out of our jurisdiction by saying, we're gonna send it to the FBI and the TBI to further investigate it. At that point, there's nothing that anyone can do because it's out of our wheelhouse at this point. We still have cases that are lingering because he's made that decision. They never get their due diligence in court. And they should be able to face the judge and have their due diligence, just like you and I would.
Right. Um, so do you think that, uh, they should be getting rid of this like immunity clause? That many officers have kind of been shielded by in these tragic situations where someone has died? Whether that's in their custody or in in a shooting?
Absolutely. I think they should get rid of it and they should be tried just like anybody else, you know what I mean? Like, I'm not saying that all police officers are bad because they're not. But I do understand that some people escalate to a point without even going through the procedures or the process of what they're supposed to be doing, right? And then when people are, and I can imagine how hard it is if somebody, you know, hooping and hollering and all this added extra stuff. And you're trying to get, cause we've also seen videos that when you thoroughly look at the video, then it tell a whole different story. And then also a lot of the things that have been happening in Chattanooga, it it has nothing to do with our city police officers. Everything to do with our deputies, with the county, right? So people, we have to understand what's the difference because we'll just see a badge and assume that it's the Chattanooga police. And that's not so. But we also gotta continue to advocacy against the sheriff deputies. And not just, you know, hold the Chattanooga police accountable, but you gotta take that additional step and hold them accountable as well. Just like they come and, you know, talk to us at city council, they need to make it, be a county committee. Talk to the mayors there as well and let them know the importance of why the deputy sheriff shouldn't be beaten on black men.
Right. And again, so going back to that, you know, you mentioned like, you know, the heightened stress that somebody who is in a situation where you might. You will see the video, we'll see somebody who might be, um, just kinda acting crazy or whatever the case may be. They are not calm. They are not, it it just is a very chaotic situation. Um, that goes back to again, the training and and the time that you've gone through a training. And you're, the hours that are required for you to become a patrol deputy or a patrol officer. Um, you kind of being more prepared with more training to handle that kind of situation. As opposed to again, with the George Floyd thing, of course, um, Brett, or the the man had some sort of relationship with George Floyd. Prior to that day, that is, we know that. But the other three officers that were there that did not step in. To say, this isn't right. This is not what we learned. This is not, they could have saved his life. But because they didn't have the training, they didn't have, feel like they had the authority to say anything to him, they sat by and watched as it happened.
Now, do we think that they did not have the training or did they just, they didn't feel assertive enough to intervene? So I I just, you know, I can't.
Combination of both. I guess we don't really know.
Yeah, we really don't. I can't answer that. And not being familiar with the laws of New York, like I can only concentrate on what's happening in Chattanooga. Because they could have intervened if they wanted to, but they chose not. But again, it's dealing with their part and their situation. But how many times, Joy, that we've said and we've watched something happen and and no one intervened? That happens more than often. It's not just with our police department. It's with us as well. It's with everybody. But when we feel situation, we immediately say, but it was their training, it was this. But when we do it and it's something that we could have done, and and we saying that now with crime in our neighborhoods. It's something that we can do to intervene, right? But sometimes they're more than often choose not to, why? So it it's a deeper.
It true, it really is. Um, and I think ultimately with the difference between a citizen who is like, I'm paying taxes. They are getting paid my taxes is the, I feel like there's a difference in the level of responsibility. Um, that, uh, you know, an officer on the street has versus a regular citizen. Of course, in an ideal, perfect world, you would, you would wanna speak up. And I, you know, hope that in your endeavors to get more people involved and kind of shift the community narrative about. The relationship with black people in law enforcement, that people do feel a little more comfortable, um, reporting crime when they see it. I do think though, there's a slight difference with with them. I I definitely expect them to intervene because that's your job to do so. Your, your job is to protect and serve. As a community member, my job is to go to work, wherever that is, pay my taxes, pay my bills. Go home, take care of my family and do it all over again.
And I wish everybody had the same view as you have, what you just stated. But again, if someone does. But again, if someone doesn't intervene, whether if you're a sworn officer or not, that's because the individual chose not to. It doesn't have anything to do with your training, because if your training clearly says that you have to intervene or you must intervene, and you still, as an officer, choose to, then you're held accountable for those actions for not intervening. That's, that's how that goes. And so those officers chose not to intervene, and we see what happened.
Right. Yeah. And I have, I have talked to, I have some family members who are in law enforcement, and I have talked to them about this, just, this is something that's passionate to me. Obviously, we're still talking about it. It's a passion to all of us, many of us in the black community, because it's such, such a heartbreaking thing to see. And one of the things that, one of my relatives, who is a police officer in Atlanta, he said he feels like they need more training so that they can, instead of taking whatever so-and-so's order was, you remember that this is what you're bound to, whatever is in this policy. You're not bound to what they say. You have to follow what's in the policy.
Right. So again, I can only speak to our policies here and what our chief of police are doing. And he's, he owes our officers account. So whatever that's happening and things, when he get winds of it, then our chief, he, he makes sure to takes care of it. Now, there have been situations, like I said, that district attorney removes them from our jurisdiction. So at that point, there's nothing that we can do because we're bound to the TBI and and every state is different. And I wish that, you know, it wasn't that way, however that it is. And I'm hopeful that one day that it will change, right? Um, because like I said, the ones that are not following the, the policies and the pro- process and the laws, then those individuals need to not be a part of our police department, and they most definitely need to be held accountable.
Right. Um, what do you think about the citizens' police oversight board? Because I know that was something that the city council, um, helped to put together, but honestly, they've been pretty silent, I feel like, on a lot of things. Um, I haven't heard really anything about them since the initial banding of them together.
Oh, girl, where have you been? They have meetings, they come give us a report for it, and so any kind of report is, I don't go ahead.
Maybe hiding. I literally, we have got, we wanted to do so many stories with them, just to hear from them, to really know who they were. And we still have not been able to really get in touch with anybody.
Well, I'm not sure why. I mean, we can't mandate that they talk to you. I mean, you know what I mean? If you reach out to them and I contact the person that's the chair over it, or, you know, see what's going on, but right now, they don't have any cases. And I believe that people probably was expect, oh, they're gonna dig back throughout history. No, that's not the role of what they do, right? So you're gonna, if somebody have an issue with the police department or something has been notified that is wrong, they investigate and review that situation. And then they make recommendations moving forward. So it's not that they're gonna go dig into something that happened in twenty twelve.
Right. I don't expect that. I do think, though, even though you can't mandate them to speak to us, I do feel like they should understand that they do have an obligation to answer to the people who are in the city, who are residents here.
Right. And they can, they can even attend meetings if they want to attend a meeting, then they'll be able to hear what they're, you know, discussing or whatever. They have Zoom meetings, they have people that's, you know, representing them in that, you know, the space for every district they can reach out to if they have any additional questions or anything like that. But like I said, I'm not sure why they're not responding to you all's requests. I mean, they're not hiding. They, you know, take the thing serious, what they do. And like I said, they, they just did a report with us on last week about the police oversight committee. And, um, what I think that people think is that it's gonna be, uh, what an oversight committee should be doing this and should be doing that, is doing exactly what it's supposed to be, be doing, right? And so whenever there's any issues and they want to take it a step level, next level above, they can bring it to council and say, we need to subpoena these officers because council has subpoena power, which gives them subpoena power to us. But don't understand that process. I do believe, I wish that it was state mandated that they just do it, you know what I mean? But I do believe what we do have in place is working, um, situation. But I do believe that it needs to have more teeth in it as far as the powers with, with the chief of police. I think that needs to be removed because if we're making, they're making recommendations and the chief of police doesn't agree with it, then it's, you know, those sanctions fall to the wayside. So we need to have something in place to hold him more accountable to what they're revealing as far as sanctions or their investigations.
Right. Okay. What time do they meet? Or do you know what day or time that they meet? Because we would, I mean, I would love to hear more from them about what they're doing, and if they do have some, some cases that they're looking over or what's going on with them.
Yeah, so they meet Thursdays. I can email you or send you that information to get the direct contact number.
Okay, cool. All right, uh, next question. Many, uh, people have questioned the conduct of activists um, with vandalism, disruption of businesses, confrontations with the police, including here in Chattanooga. Obviously, there was a situation where the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office flag was stolen and burned in the middle of a park. Uh, others have criticized law enforcement for restricting access to public areas. If a similar situation was to come up again, obviously, this is an ongoing issue, um, uh, police brutality, how would you weigh restrictions for activists and police presidents? And what would you have done differently to avoid these situations from happening?
Well, with the sheriff's flag, I mean, that has nothing to do with council. So I can only, you know, whatever happens on county property, that's the decision that those county commissioners, the sheriff and the county mayor, they have to make those decisions. So I don't want to speak on behalf of them at all as far as with the city. With my role and what we do, people should have free reign to protest however they want to protest. I support that, right? And we know what happened. That civil unrest, like, in the whole entire nation, right? And police should be able to be present, to be there as well, whoever want to be present. So I think that it's, um, respectable ways to do things, right? And, and that's my, my only concern, like, just be respectable about it. Like, if you want to get on a bullhorn, how you want to write chalk out, you want to, whatever you do, but it doesn't give you permission to get in anybody's face to violate their privacy, right? But you can protest however you want to do.
Right. Um, but what if the situations get violent? Because I think that was the criticism of the flag situation, or they just get, I guess, beyond control.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not supportive of any violent acts at all. Like, that's, you can protest, but I'm protesting, I, I support protests without all the violence. I'm not the councilwoman that's gonna support those violent measures.
Gotcha. Um, do you, uh, support any current city council restrictions on public input during meetings? Because I think around that, you know, this last year, again, going back to the, um, civil rights and, um, police brutality protests, a lot of people were empowered to try to, you know, attend the city council meetings to the point where the, the meetings were lasting very long time, trying to get through public comment.
Right. I think, you know, there's always an opportunity and window for people to speak. And not, like, these issues are ongoing. It's not just, okay, well, we saw it at one time happening. Of course, everybody was energized to get involved. But that same energy need to carry out every day all throughout the year, not just when something happens. Because even the things that you don't hear about is happening. We still need to hear your voices. We need to hear you call in about matters that matter to you. Right? Because otherwise, we don't hear it until something explodes on a national level. And we got to be more cognizant about what's happening on our local level. It shouldn't have to take for somebody else to get killed for you to feel inspired to want to speak up. Because we see the things that are happening, not just with our police department. We see all kinds of stuff that's happening that our city ordinance governs, right? But again, it only comes, you know, to certain things or certain departments that we want to be boisterous about. And so I think that people have speech, they should be able to come and they should speak. And I do agree, like, you know, for how, if we give you three hours to talk and say, you know, that should be enough. And we shouldn't have to have extended meetings to two, three o'clock in the morning. And we, you know, we done that because we wanted to hear what they had to say, and a lot of it was repetitive. But what didn't happen on the very next day at our county commissioners, they didn't care if they had the opportunity to speak or not. And that's, and that's clearly an issue, and they haven't been back to county commission. But what happens a lot of times with city council is that we're getting all the things that is county related getting dumped in our wheelhouse. And we have to be better stewards of educating our community members of where they need to direct their energy.
Right. So it sounds like you, you were okay with, you know, I guess, what was it, like, five minutes per person? And, you know, the meeting obviously going on for several hours, um, and that you feel like it should, people should continue to be interested to speak?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just waiting on something tragic to happen. You know what I mean? Like, it's issues going on all the time, like, people should be, you know, constantly, every Tuesday, like, there should be people signed up, more than one, two people talking about concerns that they have in the city of Chattanooga. And so, don't, once all of that died down on a national level, you know, nobody cared enough to even want to continue that, those campaigns. And it's really sad, like, we got people dying in our city every day. We have communities that have had lack of investment throughout history, and nobody is really championing the fight because those things aren't important because it's not on a national level.
Right. So do, is there anything that you can think of as like a way to kind of, uh, encourage more public input or people to get more, um, involved?
Well, you know, Joy, what I do now already, I talk about, come to council, come to the meeting, voice your concerns, you know, uh, try to get them engaged in it or whatever, uh, emailing people, sending out newsletters, uh, saying it on, on social media. But people just, you know, they make time for what they're interested in, and right now, it's just not interest.
All right. Okay. Well, getting to the, to the end here, um, I wanted to ask you about the COVID nineteen vaccine. Have you received the vaccine? And, um, if not, do you know when you're gonna be getting it?
I have not received the person, the, uh, vaccination yet. I don't know when that I will receive it. And so right now, I'm just mainly concerned with making sure that my seniors are getting inoculated first. And then, you know, we'll cross that road, uh, it's my time to get it, or if I choose to. I mean, it's an individual decision, right? So, um, yeah, right now, I just want to make sure that my seniors are covered.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, and what do you think that the relationship between the mayor and city council should look like? Obviously, you know, there's a mayoral race that's also going to be taking place at the same time that you all are running for seats or rerunning for, to keep your seats. Um, and is that something that you are willing to try to cultivate a relationship for?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I believe that every mayor and council members, like, you have to have an established rela- relationship or working relationship with each other. But how I've seen it done, it's, it's kind of sallow as individual that's the council and I'm the mayor. What I would love to see is that it's more potential, our mayor without council, to make decisions that, you know, that affect all nine districts, right? We should have more of a voice when it comes to our budget and other decisions as well, rollouts with different things that are happening, um, with our community. I think Mayor Burke, that he does great. He's great at, you know, what he does. And, uh, but I believe that we need to have more of a sound input because we're elected to serve our constituents. And we can do a great job at that if we're constantly shuffling and, you know, begging the formation that we need to make sound decisions beforehand. And how they react is like, it's urgent, like, immediately, we need it done now. And sometimes it takes more than just a right now kind of movement and vote, like, we have to discuss this. Like, how does, is this gonna affect our people? So we have to have those, uh, relationships with our mayor, whoever come in, like, I'm gonna build a relationship with that individual if I've not already built one with them. And so we're gonna continue that relationship moving forward.
Right. Where do you stand on, um, supporting public money for a new Chattanooga Lookout Stadium? Because I know you mentioned a lot of other initiatives that you feel like are priority for your district, but, uh, you know, that's something that I guess people are interested in potentially seeing too.
Well, hey, if they, the community want to support it, I'm down to support it too. So a lot of my, uh, decisions come first from, I want to know what the community feels, you know, what they want, want to have happen. And then we just go from there. And I know this skate park most definitely is, a lot of people want to, uh, see a skate park to happen. And I'm most definitely supportive of that as well. So whatever the direction of the people, that's the direction I'm moving in.
People, is it a skate park for the Chattanooga Lookout Stadium? That they're, they're trying to add that?
No, we want to add a skate park off of, uh, River Park, over by, um, the park. And so it gives access to everybody to be there as well. So, uh, it's a great location. So I'm really hoping that with the collaboration with the city and the county, that we can most definitely make that happen.
Right. Is that separate from the Lookout Stadium?
Yeah, that's separate from the Lookout Stadium.
So you feel like that's kind of more something you're leaning towards? Because I mean, obviously, all of these things, um, come down to funding, come down to money. And, you know, I guess it's like, what's priority? So is that skate park a little bit, you feel like that's more important to your constituents than the Lookout Stadium?
Well, you know, Joy, to be honest, I've not even heard anything about the Lookout Stadium. Uh, no one, none, none of my community members have reached out about, hey, we really would like to have a lookout stadium. But what I have heard from is that they really want to have a skate park. Um, in that, you know, not just city funded, but it takes like, you know, public and private dollars to make that happen.
Right. Um, what else do you want voters to know about you?
Well, I guess, you know, for me, like, I'm most definitely gonna push issues related to reducing poverty. Uh, for, you know, that's addressing that holistic approach to address everything because we have to. It's time, right? We have to get our people into position. And, you know, a council person is gonna fight for all. And, you know, I'm not just one-sided because I understand, you know, the plight of everybody. And it's, if we're in a community that's not thriving, it affects everybody. It doesn't matter what income level that you're on, right? If you're still hearing gunshots whiz by your house, if you don't feel safe enough to walk your dogs or, you know, your grandchildren, like our school systems, and, you know, making sure we're addressing our food deserts across the entire city. Like, we have to work, like, although we, um, represent a specific state, but we have to take the entire city of Chattanooga into account. And so I'm that kind of councilwoman, you know, I'm already here, elected, have been working. I am a voice for all citizens in Chattanooga. I will listen. I'm very transparent to the fact that I'm almost translucent. You know what I mean? Like, it's that, and then, um, most definitely is that I love when my constituents hold me accountable. Right? Because that lets me know her, they're still engaged. They're just not allowing me to do whatever it is that I want to do. And, and that's great with me because I love it. I love when they come to council meetings. I love when they flood my emails. I love when they give me a call. And it's, it's a way, right? Because I may just call, pick up the phone and call a constituent just to see how their day is doing, going. And, you know, if there's anything that their needs are. So since I've been elected, you know, while I was on the campaign trail for twenty seventeen, everything that I done, I took that serious. I continue to campaign throughout. So it's not just a one-hit wonder with me. I've got the best interest of my constituents at heart. And we're gonna together, work together to continue to improve District Nine.
Amen. All right. And the last question, did you receive a letter, um, from, uh, one of our competitors um, requesting a thousand dollars to, um, interview with them to kind of get that exposure?
I haven't, you mean like a physical letter in the mail?
A letter, an email, any correspondence with, uh, Channel Nine, um, basically saying that it would be a thousand dollars for you to basically sit down and have an interview?
Oh, no. No, I haven't. That's it. They probably lost my email. I'm not laughing at you. I'm just laughing like, wow, why would they say that? I don't, I don't get it.
Uh, yeah, one of our, our news partners with the Times Free Press reported today, or yesterday, I believe it was, that they are allowed, you know, doing candidate interviews, just like the one that we're doing right now, but that it is gonna cost a thousand dollars for a candidate. So is that something that you're considering, um, paying for?
Now, what I did, I ran an ad in the Times Free Press. Is that like the same thing that you're talking about?
No, because, you know, like, an advertisement, of course, you're gonna pay for that. But this is like a news, basically, this is gonna air, this interview that they're saying a thousand dollars for two minutes is gonna air in their newscast, you know? So it's kind of blurring the lines a little bit because advertisement is advertisement. But news time is news time, and it, you, it doesn't cost money typically.
Wow. I have not. Like, I'm like over here shocked, Joy, like, gosh, why would they? Oh, I haven't, but I'm gonna be making sure I look through my email to make sure, because so I can let them know I'm not interested.
Okay, I was gonna ask, what was your, what are your thoughts on that? Was that something that you would consider?
No, I, I wouldn't even consider that. Like, I don't, I just don't think that's right.